I'd like to extend the meeting to order, verify meeting notice and adopt the agenda. Let's stand for the foot.
My point is we need to keep the flag in the United States of America, in a true republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. Anybody in the audience wanna do something up, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and we'll record. Can't all rush at once. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Um, consent agenda, first of all, is the approval of the CISA One service contract, approval of May twentieth and June tenth, school board meeting minutes, approval of June vouchers and vouchers payable, approval of high school, unimportant, coaches and co-curricular club hourly extra duty salary schedule, and approval of new staff hires. Would anybody like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Uh, yes, the, um, co-curricular.
Okay. It's four D. Anybody like to pull anything else? Hearing none, can we have a vote on four A, B, C, and E?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve A, B, C, and E.
One of the second. If you're not in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, Quinn, you wanna discuss four D?
Why don't we have the middle school and elementary advisors and coaches on there?
Um, the middle school, we pulled it specifically because we don't have all the information, and we would like to get the, um, the new athletic director onboard, and let him or her provide us information. So, it isn't that we're not approving it, we're just deferring it until we get more.
So we will revisit it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm good, then. No, no, Chris D.
I don't.
I have one other item in this regards. There is a, um, if you look in the, uh, in the pack, it, we state that the, um, the number of assistant coaches we have for football is nine, um, in an email that was received, but yet, when you look at the, um, uh, within the pack, there's actually ten. So, I need clarification on are we approving nine or ten assistant coaches for football? Doug, you have any information on that? Or we don't have anybody? Jackie, you wanna give us some insight into that? Sure, sure. There was an email that was sent out, where we had nine, and then when you look at the itemization, there's ten left there. So, the question is, does it become, is it nine or ten? This was an email from Merkis, and it's in the date of June fourth, where it stated that we have nine assistant coaches, then further in the pack, and we caught them up here. What are we approving, nine or ten?
I think we're necessarily approving a number of coaches. I think we're just approving the salary for it, and I think that they just put it in there because I'm sure that the number of coaches varies from year to year depending upon how many kids are in the program. Um, so I, I didn't take it as we're approving this specifically with this number because I'm sure some of the other sports may vary as well.
And it did come up that, and you may ask the question, Ben, are all, I think it was parents' names, or all family conferences? They stood up at the last minute.
So I, I guess, you know, I just need clarification, because this listing here, those ten, the emails is not. So we have a time limit. Nancy, I would agree with you that we're, we're boarding on the recommendation, but I just don't want any ambiguity to say, well, we approved ten, and yet, the email says not. So, we either have a friendly amendment to this, that it says we cap the assistant coaches at nine, um...
I agree, because if you look, there's a wage, and it says it's a varsity assistant. So it could go up to nine, and maybe to thirty-four hundred.
Right. I will say, now, the time to kind of hold is never actually hold on. These positions within, within the schedule, this schedule, this degree code, and this new contract, we've never considered the double of the head funds, the voting of voters, and the salaries. That's always been the thing, we've never said that it was a cap of nine, or a cap of ten, because there was years where footballers were trying to get full time enough, and they had fifty kids enough, and they may have had seventy kids. It would mean that the body is still above the minimum, or, it would be different than bodies. We just said, that here's your salary, that comes under the operational budget. But we've never gone to a headcount, or that's the, whatever you wanna call it, that's one of the factors that gives the grades. That's all we've got to go around, for now. You know, it is a lot. So, I understand your ambiguity, but make it that you're approving the minimum, that's the question, and that's what we're going to do.
We have a motion and a second to approve the increase in assistant salaries. It will be silent on the number of the students. All right? Is that heard?
I think it's a little assistant, but seeing all the coaches and the stuff, and...
Right.
But in, but in what he submitted to us, and in the total amount of dollars that he said was gonna be spent, there are ten assistants making thirty-four hundred dollars. That's what he has, what he has there.
I think thirty-four hundred dollars.
Well, you're approving not only the per assistant rate, you're also approving the total.
Well, we're certainly not approving the total, that's all I'm saying.
That's true.
Well, what you're approving is the salaries, and you just put that in there to give us an idea of how much it would be, that's not gonna be necessarily the exact amount that Jackie's gonna put in for the budget.
Any other discussion? Who are they doing?
If I read the motion, we are just, I'm just going on the salaries, not on the number of students, and that is usually what we're discussing, should come to us if they're senior. And, and we approve the budget, we approve that staffing every year, so I don't, it shouldn't be an issue, there shouldn't have been discrepancies, and I would just suggest we get the answer to that. But for tonight's board, I think we can do this, I would just, just let, um, as good as possible, but make sure you get that question, and, 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 it's, but it isn't going to be, we, we do think, we, continue to, and, and that's clear, uh, stick it out.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, we have a, uh, motion and a second, on favor of approving the recommended changes for the high school coaches and co-curricular and club, and hourly extra duty salary schedules. Please say aye.
Aye.
Phone?
Aye.
Here is four one. And we will get that clarified. Okay. Um, reports, high school perception survey results. Who's here for that?
As you know, we've been working with, um, school perceptions to complete our community survey, and we've asked Bill Foster to come tonight to kind of go over the highlights of the survey results, and answering questions you have about those results, and he'll also share, um, some correlations from our previous survey in two thousand nine, so. And I believe he's sharing the abbreviated version.
That's refreshing to hear, because I tied up, I tied up my company's business with my...
They took a job from our, four, five, dollar, sixty, or, or somebody's schedule, but, again, my name is Bill Foster, uh, we did it in two thousand nine, uh, probably same phases, and, uh, two new phases, so, again, uh, when we, we actually started this project, remember, it was really to gather data, to inform the planning process, um, there was a subcommittee on communications that we wanted to be sure that we got some work done, is to develop , you know, later from our two thousand nine. Accomplished. So, the, uh, survey's actually now, uh, a thousand, forty, thousand people, uh, taken. We actually mailed this out to the whole, we could take it online, we had seven hundred and sixty-eight respondents online, or they could fill out, fill out and paper, paper, mail it back to us, we had two hundred and seventy-seven paper respondents, it gives us a margin there, plus or minus three point one percent, and for those who are interested in two thousand nine, we had nine hundred and eighty-nine respondents, so, very good response, very solid. We had, we used the exact same book graph as we did in two thousand nine, but I looked at yours, and, I don't know why we did this, I don't remember why we did it. Around fifteen percent, so our seniors are well represented in the data. We can also disaggregate or cross have the data by age, as you get further down in your planning process. We also asked if they were an employee, we had eleven percent of the respondents that were employees. Parents made up sixty-four percent of our sample. Children and ten, they could... This question we put on, really, uh, it's kind of funny why we put it on, I guess, because, um, we wanted people to connect with the district, explain what the relationship is, but in the old days, if we didn't put a box, to say that I have a grandchild, grandparents used to put a box in our survey and check it, so now they have a box to check, so you can, you could be a parent, and, and help younger. Is this item the success for students? And the way we got our averages on the right, created a simple average, absolutely critical was four, important was three, somewhat important was two, and if they said not important, it was a one, we calculated an average. So these are, in ranked order, what was most important, writing, math, reading is most important, critical thinking and problem solving came in fourth. And I, I believe this was the exact same list we used in two thousand nine, or, actually I meant it quickly slightly. We get down to the bottom, and we've got instrumental music, art, and bulk of music. That's not to say those things aren't important. Um, the other thing I think that's fair to say is, those things, um, where arguably reading is something that all students are involved with, bulk of music might be something that a subset are involved with, so, extremely important to some, not important to others. So then we asked, how are we doing? You can say we're doing great, good, fair, or poor, this was asked of both parents as well as staff. And we're doing great at art, in extracurricular activities, science, and math. And this is kind of the middle third of the report. And then rounding down, we're not doing very well in personal finance and preparing students for life after high school. So that's another dimension. So this is the, uh, the gap analysis that we did, and again, as you kind of start your planning process, um, this is kind of taking apples, oranges, and grapefruit, so the grapefruit are the gap, and what we did was we took how important it is, and subtracted how, how we're doing, created a gap, we started on gap, and you can see the things, the top four are preparing students for life after high school, that's something we could probably do better on. It's not saying we're doing poorly, but as, as we're gonna allocate limited resources and planning time, what does that mean? What does that look like? How can we do that better, critical thinking, problem solving, writing, grammar, and personal finance, round out the list, or at least the top four. And then the gap gets smaller and smaller, as we go to the middle third. And then again, this is according to the parents, and then rounding out the list, the gap actually turns positive, and you can see bulk of music, we're doing, uh, pretty good, art, instrumental music, and again, because those were not as important, it turned into a positive gap. So we did the same analysis for the staff, so this is a, this is a separate group, there's no overlap, and the question is, do these two groups kind of agree, and the answer is, by gosh, yes, uh, preparing students for life after high school, that's the number one gap for, uh, according to our staff. Actually, cultural diversity awareness came in second, that was a new one, critical thinking, problem solving showed up again, writing, grammar, and so on, down the list. This is the middle third. And then according to the staff, we had one positive gap in extracurricular activities. That's the gap analysis. Then we allocated a section of the survey to communications, and to hear everyone responded to this, so generally, what is your preference when receiving district information, because we're always debating, and we have to print newsletters, and apparently, thirty-seven percent said, yep, still need to print some newsletters, sixty-three percent electronic is fine, we're seeing every year, this, more and more people are becoming comfortable with electronic, but this graph kind of helps make sense of that. So who wants the paper, who wants the electronic? And you can really see the, the parents are moving towards a electronic mode, with email being number one at ninety percent, and actually, number two for district mailings, um, non-parents, that was the non-parents either. So I, I think that's the group, so, kind of makes sense. Dr. Holtz isn't here tonight, but it looks like he won't be twittering or tweeting, I guess he's tweeting, doesn't he? Does he tweet? All right. It's interesting, the Hales Corners now a journal sentinel are at about twenty-three, twenty-two percent for the non-parents. And we asked a couple of performance questions as it relates to district communication, how effective has the website been this last year? When I look at this graph, I always just look at, really, these two, um, you know, everything else is pretty positive, really, ten percent, uh, said it was either not effective or extremely ineffective, that's a group we can drill into and say, well, what, what's going on there? And we actually did that, we pulled out some comments specifically around communications, the things we can do to improve. Uh, same question around the district's electronic, uh, email and electronic communications, and here we're down to seven percent. And this is the overall question, overall communications, and, uh, you really don't have a context for this, but we asked this question in many other districts, and it's not uncommon to see the, uh, the nine and the three add up to close to forty percent with districts. So, relatively speaking, Quinn is doing very good, on the communications thing, though. I know there's things you still wanna do, but you're doing quite well. So we switch from communications over to facilities, um, I think these are questions we asked in two thousand nine, generally very positive, our, our schools' facilities are safe and secure. The grounds are clean and well kept, only five percent disagreeing with that, and having adequate, uh, classroom and instructional space, nine percent that disagree with that. Parking's a little bit bigger problem. You know what school that is?
Yeah. We have a pretty good idea.
And, uh, the adequate athletic facilities, this, this is actually, uh, quite positive, six percent disagreeing with this. So then we switch from facilities into technology, and ask some questions about access, and specifically, uh, what type of internet access you have, and, uh, eighty-nine percent, this is pretty typical for most districts like yourselves, eighty-nine percent being wired with high speed now, six percent don't have internet access, um, four percent don't know, but they have some sort of internet, and two percent are dialogue.
On this, this screen itself, is, the only question I really have, is, is this just parents, or is this survey general?
This is survey general, but it'd be very easy to go down and look at parents only. My, my guess is that you're, you'd be north of ninety percent.
Could you possibly get that? Because that just ties into our long-range strategic plan, that comes to one-to-one initiative, and the concerns that people are vocalizing, some parents are vocalizing to us, but if this number is eighty-nine percent already, if we look at just parents, is it closer to ninety-five to ninety-nine? That's what I would like to know. Okay, glad you can do that. Thank you.
That begs the question to you, and why you raised that, is, you know, how granular can you get on, on these questions, on a age-specific basis or parents-only basis? You know, you talk about, one of the previous slides, about people preferring written communication versus electronic, I, it's just my perception, I, I don't know how many facts to back this, that, as the older the population, they prefer things in print versus electronic.
I think you're absolutely right, and that's something that's very easy to do, we can cross tab the question by age, you can actually see the average for each subgroup.
Right.
It's pretty interesting.
Yeah.
But I think your, your hunch is, is up right on. Although, my eighty-three-year-old mother got her third new computer, and I get an email every day, so.
You've created a monster.
Yeah. Actually, I just talked to her on the way down. This is kind of interesting, which of the following do you have in your home? Um, this is another one we could cross tab by age. To me, it's one that, continuing to just tablet computers, even at its lowest, but thirty-six percent are also without a tablet computer, and ninety-three have a computer, laptop, desktop, or network.
Can you make a note of this one also, because this, again, ties to our one-to-one, I would like to know how it ties with our parents versus just the general public? And this whole, I guess my whole thing is to use for future, is the whole technology piece, can you segregate public versus parents? I'd like to see that information, because it'll help with the process.
Can you do that? This was, uh, again, kind of informing your, the question, when your child is attending middle and high school, could, could you, would you, uh, provide your student with one or more of the following wireless handheld devices? So you could do a portable computer, a tablet, an iPod touch, or a Kindle? Sixty-two percent said yes, uh, twenty-two percent said not sure, and sixteen percent said no. Now, the interesting, to me, that it's not a perfect survey question, because we got a couple variables floating, one is, would you?
Right.
And one is, could you? So there's, one is a philosophical question, and one is a financial question.
That's why I wonder where the sixteen percent comes into that whole scheme, is it parents or is it public?
This particular one is parent only.
This is parent only? With a child in the district?
Yeah, so when your child is attending. So you still have some people who are, who could be either financially against it or philosophically against it.
Or, well, you phrased the question, when your child is attending middle school. It could have been an old, parent of an old child that is attending, that's why I wondered.
And the other place to, to really get insights, because what, what happens is, the quantitative question seeds a thought, and then when they get to the end of the section, they write a comment. So, uh, in this, in this case, it'd probably be real helpful to read all the comments having to do with technology, because you'll see the nuances of what people are thinking. They might say, I'm for it, but I don't like iPhones, or I'm for it and I love iPhones, or whatever, that's where you get that. Okay, then, this, uh, this is a question we asked, actually, quite often in other districts, please rate your overall perception of the district in the following areas, evaluated features, support staff, secretaries, the building administration, the district administration, and even the school board. And, uh, and what I did was, I went out and looked at similar districts, and similar I defined two ways, one is by enrollment size, and the other is kind of by your socioeconomic positioning, um, so I don't compare you to a small rural school or a large urban school, that other schools kind of like Whitnall, and I calculated similar school averages to see how you're doing, and actually, uh, building administration, um, a lot of times they're not overly loved, yours are loved more than others with other districts. District administration's positive, teachers are high, but they're right around the norm as well as the support staff, and even the school board is a little bit ahead. Um, and this is actually pretty telling, because if there is dissatisfaction with some group, you'll see some pretty big swings. Okay, now, what we did for each school, if, if I was a parent and I had a child at the high school in Edgerton, um, well, what happened is, I would get two survey questions, so two survey pages, so if I had three kids, actually, I have three kids, one in elementary, one in middle, and a high, we'd take it three times. So this is only, now we're evaluating the school, we didn't do this specifically in two thousand nine, but we figured out a way to create a longitudinal comparison, so, this is, uh, Edgerton, so I left in, uh, two questions, and then I did one comparison on each school. So academic expectations, you could be too high, too low, or just right, the red is just right, arguably, you could raise, uh, expectations a bit. The overall amount of homework, my oldest child is asked to complete is, can be too much just right or too little. And then these are questions that we asked, um, back in two thousand nine, and two thousand thirteen, we wanted to create some comparison. If there was a, um, green is good, red is bad, that's the code, so these are positive variances, and, uh, somebody usually asks, well, what is significant? Which I hate that question, because there's a, there's a statistical answer to that, which is really the wrong answer. The, uh, the answer is, if it's a, if it's above point two, generally, um, it's kind of significant, that means some people actually, they, they significantly do that, they move, and, uh, you can pick it or negative or positive, so otherwise, there's plus and minus, or not as significant. And these are against and in agreement, strongly agree, the, the strongly disagree, weighted five or two, one, stickover neutral. So, all green at, uh, Edgerton Elementary. This is Hales Corners Elementary, very similar in terms of we could raise the, the bar of it academically. Overall amount of homework, pre-set a little, by the way, if you ask the kids, you get a different answer. And, uh... And again, all positive compared to 2009 at Hales Corners Elementary. Now, the middle school, the academic expectations, we've got 23 percent saying it's too low. And it's similar, maybe a little bit higher in terms of expectations to be raised. Homework, can increase homework a bit. And the longitudinal analysis here, we had one turn red. And I don't know the story between, about parents' teacher conferences if we're doing those differently. Parents apparently don't like the question. And everything else is...
It gives them a reason to change it.
And it does give you a excuse.
It's a big change between the elementary to the high school.
And...
And the format is totally different.
Exactly.
It doesn't mean you don't get quality time with that teacher. You don't have a set time that you see that teacher, but you see six teachers and you have to wait for, say, Mr. Severt, a half hour.
Is that different than in...
Yeah. In the elementars, they have a specific time.
But in 2009?
No. We've decreased the amount of time since actum. So that, it makes it even more difficult to get parents in there now. You know, I've tried to bump that up last year and this year, so maybe, you know, as parents get used to it, it'll get better, but they have less time to conference.
But this year seemed less attended, from my standpoint.
The spring conferences are generally not attended as well as the fall ones.
Right.
The fall ones are very well-attended. And that would be where I would sense the frustration would come from, especially from sixth-grade parents, because they're new.
They're young students.
Right. They want to see how their child's doing and they, you know, may not get to all the
So the high school, actually very similar to the middle school in terms of academic expectation, only 1 percent saying it was too high. Homework, you know, one could say, well, 70 percent is just right, but I always, I kind of just try to balance the blue and green. Here we have a longitude analysis, again, more critical of the parent-teacher conference model maybe than in 2009. A little more concerned that running appropriate student skills. The next two are, actually, the next three are virtually unchanged, even though they turned red because they're point of one, but I wouldn't say that's significant. And I'd say the last one, the information on the child's report card, progress report, helps me understand if these are progress, a sub-three significant improvement from 2009.
Jackie, are your teacher conferences similar to the middle school?
Yes.
And this is district overall satisfaction. I would recommend the district to a friend moving into the area, quite, quite strong. Only 7 percent either disagreeing or strongly disagreeing.
As I compared to other districts.
Very good. It's very good. I'd say probably, there's only a, say, if you put 10 similar, you're probably number two. You have a neighbor who scored very wrong with people's question.
What neighbor would that be?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Breedale is a...
Have a much smaller community, too.
And it's the same community, isn't it?
It is.
What do you rate the Whitnell school compared to neighboring schools? Very positive. And overall satisfaction, again, very, very positive. Really no bad news to share tonight.
As compared to our last survey?
I'll look. I think it's better. And I don't know if we asked those exact same questions.
Any member?
Very similar. I'm not sure we asked them this exact way in a camera. I'll go back and look. We did have some overall sat, but I think we made it pretty close a bit. I'll check.
Because this was a big, this was a big question frame in the last go-around. And that's why, can we see a longitudinal?
Yeah, I'll look. And if they're not perfect, the way our software works, if they're tweaked at all, it's not perfect, but we can do something similar.
Okay.
So that was all the quantitative. And Luanne came on board and said, "Hey, I've got this idea." And so we did have a question around the forward-thinking initiative. And we had, I don't count these, but I'm guessing over 100, or maybe, can you get the list?
No.
Okay. I'm guessing over 150 people said they'd be interested in participating and provided their names and contact information. So pass it on to you there.
This, the report that we have, are these all the comments that were listed on the survey?
No. No, those, there's a comment team summary that we got on the board that...
Could you send, I would request the full copy of all the comments, all of them? Because in here, I didn't see any specifically about technology words.
Right.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, we can do that. And the other thing that, if you'd like, we can do keyword searches. So say anything that has to do with computers, internet, you can add those words and say, here are all the comments that had, many of those words occurred.
Is this a database that we would have access to?
Yes. Yeah.
And I guess I'd be looking for the login and the password to that.
Okay, we can do that. If I can get your email addresses.
Oh, wait, they're on our website.
Okay.
Yep, they're on our website. And if not, Kathy's got them show-forward.
Send it to Kathy.
Yeah.
I can send you an entire list of...
Okay, that'd be great.
And it's a searchable database that we can manipulate and look at.
Yeah, it's pretty intuitive. If they have questions, call me, but you'd be able to slice and dice and disagree with the data.
That would be, that's a step above the one we had three, four years ago.
No, same system.
Phew, we didn't have that access back then. That'd be great. I'd like to see that. Because there's a lot of questions that come up with this survey.
It is.
There's a lot of questions I'd like to be able to answer.
And there's no way we can write the report and you're going to say it. And then once you see something, you're going to, well, that makes me think, what about this group or this subgroup?
Right. We've got seven unique people that come from different perspectives to be able to do this. And then maybe Mr. Shaw will take this and do a workshop someday. Do you know what I mean? Something where we can actually sit and discuss and see where we are and look at from a longitudinal standpoint, where we were, where we are, and it all planned for the next.
I can do that. And the other thing that we can do is, say, you don't have access right away, if you didn't have access to 2009, you can see that as well.
Wonderful.
Any other questions?
I have questions of our principles, though. How do we use this information?
I don't know. I started to share some of the data with the staff. I can think of one right off the bat, 90 percent of our parents or the community is looking at internet. And we're doing weekly newsletters and then we move to weekly email. You know, some of our teachers are already doing that. That's just one example. The communication team, the linear night head is definitely something that's our next step. It was get the survey, get the data. I like the word searching by word portion of that as well. And then formulate our plans from a strategic plan for the communications team as well. And interface with that other community that Luanne is working with. So I can...
The other question I have is, how do we take these gap results and use them to better ourselves? I mean, can we, we can pinpoint where we're struggling and try and, through this survey, or is it, you know, and can we try and improve in those areas? Will this give us that information?
Yeah, for sure. You can pinpoint where we're struggling. I also think it's very nice that after four years of working on something like this, that we can pinpoint successes as well, that things have been done well and celebrate those. We don't know if we do enough of that either. But definitely look at some of the areas where we could see improvement and not only work on some things, but can make sure that we're communicating that so that these stakeholders know that we are working on it.
And would this information support, you know, could you come with the spreadsheets that say, you know, we've got this many students and this particular student is struggling at this particular thing? Does this information support that?
I'm not sure.
Is it a little bit more general?
Yeah.
This is, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Luanne.
I just want to thank you, Bill, and thank you to everyone who filled it out. It's really great to see the changes, mostly positive, and then the areas that we can work on in the future. And absolutely, our goal is to reach 150 people, so we have to up our goal. So this is great to see the people that are willing to even participate even more in the future of our kids, which I think is great. And I also just can't help but thank the staff because it really shows up, just in my tours of schools and in the comments, it really shows what a great staff we have. And that's why I think a lot of the rest of the results come out good, so that's great. I do have a question, maybe we can just tuck it away for the future discussion, but the question around college and career-ready and to see some of the low scores around that, and that's the end result of what we're trying to do. So that really gives us, there's a lot of debate out there on what that is and what we should be focusing on and, you know, the shift toward career and what does that look like? I think that's a bigger discussion than just this. And then the other thing I liked seeing was the critical thinking and problem solving. I'd sure like to know how we teach that because you hear that so often, how important that is. Showed up as important down there. So at some point, I would love to know, how do we teach that in our schools? What are the tools? You know, what are the activities that we do to know that we're getting that to our kids? Because that is really a big requirement, isn't it, when they get out in the world? So those are just my comments and some questions for the future.
Thank you, Luanne. Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, I think you're going to lead the discussion around the health insurance updates, just a report and then acting on this.
Right. I had a memo in there and attached to it were some plan design changes suggested by our insurance consultant that would enable us to basically freeze our premium rates for the third year in a row. They would involve some significant changes in deductibles and copays. We've gotten some additional information that I emailed some of it out to you earlier today and then had a hard copy at your desk tonight because I didn't have time to get it out in email. And what I would propose is that we have a board meeting as soon as possible devoted just to this topic so that we can have our representative from BSG come out, go through this, hear what your feelings are about the changes, what suggestions. I know Nancy's already discussed some things with me about other ways that we might approach some of these costs so that we can keep a handle on our budget. We need to be doing something fairly soon since our anniversary date, our renewal date is July 1st. The longer we go beyond that date, the more difficulty, all of the calculations for retro and things like that because of withholding from salary for the portion of the insurance cost. So I guess I would, that's about all I have to say, other than this is for information and to kind of get the ball rolling.
I had a discussion with both Doug and Luanne on this topic and we, you know, as much as I would like to have this embedded both in the personnel and finance committee, from a timing standpoint, I don't think we're going to have that luxury. So we'll probably convene a board meeting just on this topic, as Doug mentioned. Please take the time to digest this information. We'll get a date that is as convenient as all the board members can make and have this general discussion. As I say, normally, I would like to see this go, you know, finance personnel, but we just don't have that luxury, given the timing, so... Any other comments or questions? I know Nancy, you had a couple.
Yeah, I had, I had sent Doug some questions and the questions kind of went around what our utilization is in certain areas. And when I'm looking at doing insurance renewals, I always look to change plan designs. First of all, for things that'll save us money, but yet won't affect a lot of people. So that was my question about the out-of-network. And as you can see, almost all services are in-network. And so if we change the out-of-network co-insurance, that will save us money, but it won't affect really anyone. And then my other question was about emergency room and urgent care utilization, which you had at your desks, at your tables. And you'll see that our, people that are on our health insurance utilize the emergency room a lot and don't utilize urgent care hardly at all. And so another thing that I look at when I'm looking at health insurance renewals is how to change people's behavior. We don't want people going to the emergency room. We don't want them using that as their primary care physician. And so you need to change the plan design to discourage people using the emergency room and encouraging them to use urgent care or their primary care physician. So those are a couple of the things that Doug and I talked about before the meeting. So hopefully, he's going to go back to Mary and get some, should make some, you know, changes and see what that actuarial would be on our, on the results.
There is definitely a trend in the industry to move away from emergency room visits versus urgent care or even, I mean, if you look at hospitals, the construction of new hospitals, there's a minimum to have a boutique facilities for that type of activity now. So I mean, thank you, Nancy, for, you know, your expertise in this area and then we get to the board and to the district, so... All right, so we'll, we'll get a date scheduled and we'll have a joint meeting so that we're not having this, this kind of step process through personnel and finance if we just don't have that.
Where do we stand? Do you have the outside or normal meetings?
Yes.
Where do we stand on the insurance committee?
It is actually at the policy level, and I think there's a policy committee meeting this week, is there not?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So it's an agenda item for them this week, Thursday, I believe, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the health insurance updates? If not, let's move on. Any comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration? Anybody have anything they want to tee up? Hearing none. Any other board member announcements? Luanne, go ahead.
Two. One is there's a Miles Schools Conference coming up that I and you and I are going to attend. We had a pre-meeting and we have three goals. We've looked at all the sessions and looked at our strategic plan to see how does this fit. Again, why are we going? What can you bring back? So there were three things just wanted to mention that we hope to do. One is learn tools. This is more for the administrators going, you know, around. How do you create those learning targets in each classroom that are related to Common Core standards? We see a lot of good stuff at the conference around that. One is around how you come up with more formative assessments, again, related to the Common Core and ongoing assessments that inform instruction in the classroom. And then this one's for us that I think will be great. It's learning, what can leaders do to elevate beliefs about what's possible for our students during all these times of change? And then how do we create an organizational culture for change that works? So those are things we hope to bring back.
And I think that conference starts June 30th.
Yes, and goes through the 3rd.
3rd.
Right, July 3rd. And then the second thing is, there's an ideas exchange that WASB has, and Dr. Holt and I were working on submitting a proposal for us to present at the convention next January on our community engagement work. I know that's an important topic around the state and they're always looking for ideas. And then that also kind of keeps our feet to the fire on how we do it. I think it helps sometimes to talk about it with other people. So we're going to submit that if that's okay with the board. And we'll let you know if we get selected.
Let's hope so.
That'd be great.
Thank you for your work on that.
Are you going out there for that with Centrus, Tracy or Fredrick from the...
WASB. Yeah, there's a form. You go online and you fill it all out.
Yep.
Yep. Got it. Thank you.
Any other announcements?
I just wanted to say that I was at the ribbon-cutting ceremony yesterday for the Greenfield Farmers Market. And so the Greenfield Farmers Market will be held every Sunday from ten to two. It's at Conkle Park. I think it's the only farmers market that's on Sunday in this area, so that's a really nice thing. It was really nice, the, the day was beautiful and there were a lot of vendors there and, you know, a lot of people really came out, a lot of people came out for the ribbon-cutting ceremony and people stayed and did shopping and, so it was really nice.
So where are our fruits and vegetables tonight?
Well, they're at my house.
So everyone invited Nancy to help?
Yeah. So with that farmers market, is that going to be open just seasonally? Do you know?
It's from, well, now until October.
How about next year? Is it the same thing? It's going to be-
Probably from June till October or something like that.
Okay.
Wonderful. Well, I didn't go and I, I actually drove by and there were like thirty or forty tents.
Yes.
You know, I was surprised.
It was really nice, really nice.
Looked well-attended.
I was there about twelve-thirty and it was, at that time it was still-
Yeah, going strong, so that's great, yeah. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
No.
No.